Leslie finally, old Leslie finally had it tired. Time finally ran out. I need to go by Station One and check out the remodel over there.
Oh, it's nice.
You probably don't miss the days when you had an office. If it wasn't an office, right?
That was hard. Sitting there with Secretary Elvail.
It could be good.
It was rough.
Where'd you choose somebody out of?
You had to sit there in the back of the issue.
Looks like at seven o'clock, we'll call it over to the Seymour Council Meeting on Monday, February the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Welcome, everybody. And, uh, I don't see Angel anywhere. Does anybody see Angel in the room? Um, council members, would anybody like to, uh, lead the invocation tonight?
I'll do it.
Thanks, Brad.
Powerhead, Heavenly Father, we just ask you to be with us tonight and, uh, throughout our meeting, uh, guide us, uh, to make the decisions for the city. Uh, we're thankful for our city, uh, department head and will review the information they've provided and, uh, the successful year they've had. We ask that you watch over us through this meeting and, uh, in Jesus' name we'll pray. Amen.
Thanks, Brad. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Brad filled in, so you're safe. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Bose. Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Tarrell.
Here.
Mr. Hackney.
Mr. Hubbard.
Here.
Mr. Davidson.
Yep.
Mr. Lucas.
I'm here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Everyone is present and accounted for. So everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the previous meeting. If so, entertain any motions related to...
Go ahead and do accept.
Second. I'm a motion and accept and second to accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor, signify with aye.
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 All those pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, let's see. Are your reports from committees, boards, and commissions, Mr. Bose? Reports, Mr. Beatty.
No.
Mr. Tarrell.
No.
Mr. Hackney.
No.
Mr. Hubbard.
Yes, Retail Development met last week to discuss some food truck issues we were having. Uh, we're not, you, we're not done reviewing that information and when we do, we'll get back with you. That's all I got.
Mr. Davidson, anything?
I do, uh, Industrial Development's gonna meet on March tenth at nine AM to discuss abatement stuff. That's all.
Mr. Lucas.
No report.
Mr. Fry.
No report.
Uh, looks like we'll go to old bit, or no, sorry, no public hearings tonight. We'll go to old business.
Old business, Mr. Beatty.
No.
Mr. Tarrell.
No doubt.
Mr. Hackney.
No, sir.
Mr. Hubbard.
No, sir.
Mr. Davidson.
I do. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, do the second reading of ordinance number two, council bill number two by title only.
Mr. Beatty.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Tarrell.
Yes.
Mr. Hackney.
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lucas.
Yes.
Mr. Fry.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number two, council bill number two for twenty-twenty-five, and ordinance submitting chapter one fifty, section thirty-eight of the Seymour City Code, standards for ERA evaluation. Industrial Development, Mr. Davidson.
Uh, really nothing to add other than we were just updating some, uh, ERA evaluation standards. That was last updated in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, anybody have any questions from the council regarding that?
Uh, just remind me again, what, why did we remove this one section?
Uh, about the list?
Yeah.
Uh, we met with, at our meeting, we had the United Way, Macy Barley was there, and they already do that. They already keep that sort of information.
Okay.
So we felt it was redundant to do that when they already do that.
Okay.
That's why we decided to remove that.
So they're interacting with the, uh, with the companies?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So they're already doing that, and so, uh, Chad wasn't there, but me and Denny were there and we kind of felt like it was kind of redundant to add that when it's already being done.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number two, council bill number two on second reading.
Second.
Mr. Beatty.
Yes.
Mr. Tarrell.
Yes.
Mr. Hackney.
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lucas.
Yes.
Mr. Fry.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number two, council bill number two for twenty-twenty-five has passed second reading, seven oh.
I have nothing further.
Mr. Bose, not that it's anything, but they, they get my name spelt right on the minutes, but they miss me on the, it's F R E Y. If you look at, uh, the passing of the readings.
Okay.
If you don't mind. Not that big a deal, but I, I thought it was not a big deal, but my wife says, well, that may mean they don't think you read it, so. I just, I just wanted to make sure I got it said right.
All righty.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any additional, old business, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Lucas.
None for me.
Mr. Fry.
No, sir.
Okay, well, let's have a state of the city, folks. Um, sorry, we're trying to make sure that the streaming is working while we're doing that, so give me just a second to... Okay, it is working. Perfect. So everyone up here, feel free to adjust. You're correct, Chris, 'cause I'm glad you did that, 'cause that means I need to do this. State of the city, it's five twenty-five.
Light out up there, good.
It's up to you. You guys want me to turn the light out up there?
Probably see it better.
Can I help a little? Everybody up here gets to take a nap, though. If you snore, we will pick them. Trying not to pinch a cord. Okay. So, welcome, everybody, to State of the City twenty-twenty-five, and we try to stay close enough to at least one of these multiple microphones, that way everybody listening at home can hear what's going on. So my apologies, though, so if I end up in weird spots, that's why I'm, I'm trying to make sure I cover it. I'm Mayor Matt Nelson. This is my sixth State of the City. This is where we look back at the previous years, so this year we'll be looking back at twenty-twenty-four. We'll look ahead to twenty-twenty-five and beyond. One of the things that I've got to remember to remind all of you is our department heads are here tonight. They are here for the purpose that if this is not possible without them. Every one of the department heads has put in a lot of hard work in twenty-twenty-four. Every one of their team members has put in a ton of hard work in twenty-twenty-four. So we'll start off, uh, last year, many people spent a lot of energy working on narratives that could, that could have been viewed as against our community. Today, I'm gonna share the data from twenty-twenty-four, so you can make your own decisions. You look at, you can look at it and decide what twenty-twenty-four looked like based on the facts. Yep, I'm close enough. Perfect. For those of you in the back that don't have your glasses on, 'cause I know I couldn't see it if I was that far back. General Fund last year had twenty million dollars in revenue, just a smidge over, about five thousand dollars over. Had just a little over nineteen million dollars in expenses. So our net revenue last year was a little over a million dollars that we're on the good side of. Rainy Day Fund, back in twenty thirteen, all the way through twenty-twenty-two, had just under sixty-two hundred dollars in revenue. For a city our size, if you want to do the math on it, that doesn't take us very far into January first. Okay? Twenty-twenty-three, somewhere in twenty-twenty-two, Darren and I had a conversation about the ways that the Rainy Day Fund can be raised. Counsel, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to stare at my back the whole, most of the time. My apologies. So somewhere in there, Darren and I talked about what can go into it. Interest, you can designate just a little bit from the general fund into it, but there's only certain things that the state allows to go into the Rainy Day Fund. So in twenty-twenty-three, we upped the Rainy Day Fund to just a little over a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, or about a ninety-six percent increase compared to that sixty-two hundred. Twenty-twenty-four, we added another sixty-five percent, got us a little over five hundred thousand dollars. For those of you that come to regular council meetings, you know that we just passed our resolution, which is all due to the hard work of Darren Bose. Darren managed to manage the funds well, turned that, uh, that little bit extra that we do have sitting around, gained a lot of interest with it. Um, as of today, we set just a little over one point two million dollars. Next slide's one that I include on a regular basis. This slide, the information on it was brought to us by Jackson County Industrial Development Corporation, who celebrated their fortieth anniversary last year. Last year was the largest year for promised investment in Jackson County, hundred ninety-eight point five million dollars. Still a tick shy of that two hundred million dollar goal that they seem to always have. Um, they'll get there someday maybe, but it's, it's a rough one. Over the last three years, or over the last five years, three of those years have been over a hundred million dollars. And over the last five years, starting in twenty-twenty, the average has been a hundred and twenty-seven point two million dollars a year of promised investment. So a little over six hundred and thirty-six million dollars in that five-year span. Seymour Transit. You got Edie and Taylor and Lisa working in the office of Transit right now. Total rides were up, about twenty percent. Hours driven, up about eighteen percent. Revenue was up about twelve percent, just shy of it. The only thing that was really down last year for Transit was senior rides, and even that still made up forty percent of the total rides that they offer, which allows our citizens to continue to live active lifestyles, even after they've got to the point that maybe they can't drive anymore. We will see some new faces coming up. Edie is retiring at the end of the week, um, twenty-six years, I believe it's been. So we'll see some new faces. Dylan's coming on board, um, well, actually, he came on board today. And then we'll possibly start seeing advertising on the side of the buses again like we did fifteen or so years ago. It's not something that's been around in the time that I can really remember, but I've seen pictures of it. Let's jump over to planning and zoning for a second. Back in twenty-twenty-one, city council granted planning and zoning the opportunity to do what they call curb appeal. That program in twenty-twenty-four finished forty-seven thousand dollars worth of projects with just under five thousand dollars worth of tax dollars invested. Great return if I, yeah, this is a great return. I don't see how else you look at that one. Since its inception in twenty-twenty-one, they've done two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of finished projects with just a little over twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of investment from the city side. So if you've not heard of the curb appeal program, get out there and check it out. It is worth it. I could tell you stories all day long and some of the interesting pieces that I've seen from it. Next stop, when we're thinking about planning and zoning, net assessed value. Two thousand eight was the last time Seymour, Indiana was over a billion dollars in net assessed value. It also happened to be the year that the state decided they were putting property tax caps in place. It went down for several years. Just this last year, it went up three point five seven percent, which is just under what the state allows us to grow. For those of you that aren't aware, the state does put a cap on what we can grow every year, and four percent was our magic number going into this year. In my time, in the last five years, we've grown about sixteen percent in our net assessed value. Random tidbit that I picked up when I was looking at the numbers this year, Seymour, Indiana makes up about two point two percent of the square miles of Jackson County, Indiana. But we make up about forty-one point three percent of the net assessed value. We spoke of retirements a minute ago. Planning and zoning had one last year as well.
I thought you were gonna retire me. Oh, I ain't ready yet.
Dave retired for the second, third, fourth time, whatever number he's up to. He was military before he came to us, spent some time with Park and Rec, spent some time with planning and zoning. Congratulations to Dave, but that made some shuffling have to happen. Kelly moved on up. He became the new building inspector, and he's doing a pretty good job, if I do say so. We brought in another recent retiree. Uh, only negative to that one was he found a job that paid a little better and moved on to it. So at the end of the year, we were left with an opening in our ordinance administration spot. We have made an offer since. Um, our new ordinance administrator, Jason, will start in about two weeks, so we look forward to getting him on board and getting things rolling with him. Well, that ain't clicking very well. There we go. As we look at what the year was for planning and zoning, though, for twenty-twenty-four, combined in the fringe and in the city limits, we had fifty-one new home starts. It's the highest it's been since two thousand and seven. The twenty-five of those that were in city limits totaled five point five million dollars in cost. Okay? That still means we're gonna be short on that, uh, report that we worked for Thrive Alliance a few years ago, back in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, I think is when it wrapped up. We're still gonna be short by the time we get to the end of the decade, but at least we made progress. We got a little bit closer. New business starts, highest they've been since two thousand and eighteen. Looking towards the future, Jeremy's already sat down with some, uh, leaders from other communities to see what their process looks like when they start reviewing their ordinances, trying to make sure that he's on the ball on that one. The ordinance review process will take place sometime this year. He's also looking at updating some software to help make everything flow a little bit smoother, uh, make life a little easier on Kelly and maybe even Jason, our new ordinance administrator. Seymour Fire Department. The guys that work out of Station One, they got to move into a newly remodeled station this year, uh, provided safety and health benefits, provided a new exercise room, or not a new one, but a remodeled one. Uh, the new island was a interesting topic of conversation. Uh, Eric, you could probably ad lib on that one a little while. But they also added a truck-mounted foam unit, which helps with electric vehicle fires and helps with the airport. That foam-mounted unit, uh, was supported by the redevelopment commission, was supported by the airport authority, and a couple other organizations that helped make that happen. It's a community coming together to help one another. We got an approval for a new training grounds grant, um, three and a half-story project that'll go on out at Freeman Field where we currently have our training grounds. They'll also give us live fire options when it comes to training down the road, but lots of good pieces would be added with that. And this was the first year that we were able to offer cancer screenings. Caleb, I'm gonna throw it to you for a minute on this one, just for the fact that you came to us with the union and asked for that, and thank you for asking, because that was a great addition for our firefighters. They face one of the lines of service that very often has cancer rates that are above normal. With that request, we were able to fund it through council support for twenty-twenty-four year. We got the first round of those off the ground. Um, and going into twenty-twenty-five, we've had, been able to add a few additional screenings as well. So I look forward to trying to help keep you guys healthy and safe as long as possible. Looking to the future, new apparatus. Ladder three will be here sometime around May. That was originally ordered in March of twenty-twenty-three. So when we go to replacing, uh, large pieces of equipment like that, it is not a run down to the, you know, to the local car lot and grab a new piece of equipment. It takes years to get here. Engine one was next on the list, and we actually just signed the contract on that about two weeks ago. Does that sound right? That was, uh, estimated to deliver in twenty-twenty-eight. Grants. Let's talk about grants from last year. Couple of our firefighters worked hard to land us a little over three hundred thousand dollars on the self-contained breathing apparatus. That, those went into service earlier this month. Training grounds grant, had several people work on it. Station safety measures, got some new stuff coming there to help care, keep our firefighters safe when they're at work, at their home, away from home, if you will. And then that foam equipment was all put together with lots of grant options. Speaking of grants, I'm gonna dive off into a little bit of a, a separate area here. Owner-occupied rehab was approved last year. It was another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars added to what we worked on. CCMG gained approval. And I started to write down all those that had worked on grants. When I got to somewhere around seventeen or eighteen different members of the team that had worked on different grants, not to count the five or six that are, uh, not full-time employees in the city of Seymour but do help us in that process, I realized that I was gonna forget somebody. So to everybody that worked on a grant last year, thank you. For the most part, I know who you are, but I didn't want to miss some of you tonight. So everywhere from a few hundred dollars to one point five million dollars, we had roughly three million dollars worth of grant money come into the city of Seymour last year. Inspections. This year, or late last year, saw a new full-time inspector. He works Monday through Friday, eight to five. Makes it a whole lot easier when you're a business owner and you can call in and talk to the same person two or three times if you need to. Back when I was a business owner, I can remember having to wait three days to get back in touch with somebody to get that follow-up inspection, so it's a good addition. We still have our three-shift inspectors, so any given day, we've typically got two guys, Monday through Friday, that are working on inspections. About eighteen months ago, we added a program called Mobilize. Mobilize come in and streamlined the process a little bit. With Mobilize, we're able to not just identify the problem, not show the code, if you will, but to take the picture of it, click the button on the iPad, make it a pretty simple solution, to be able to then send the report to the manager or the business owner. That way, it's a lot simpler for them to understand. It's a lot simpler for them to read, and it's actually even come in beneficial to us in court since we implemented about eighteen months ago. So it's been a great addition. Um, yeah, it's just been a good, good addition. Parks and Recreation. Twenty-twenty-four saw over five thousand, five hundred thousand visits to Seymour Parks. Freeman had the most with a hundred and fifty-two thousand visitors, or visits. Westside showed the largest percentage of increase. Sorry. Thanks to the guy in the back doing this, though. Westside with the largest increase was over seventy percent more visits last year than the year before. Could it have been the splash pad that opened somewhere around June? Maybe. The new piece of playground equipment that was helped, that was funded through the Indiana Department of Health grant that we received the year before, possibly. Whatever it was, Westside Park grew, and I expect it to grow again this year, so get down there and enjoy it. I know they've been taking reservations, uh, for the... Help me, my brain stopped. Been taking reservations for the shelter houses, and they've been doing a good job of trying to keep the parks full. I do have to say thank you to the Jackson County Visitor Center, uh, because we wouldn't have the numbers that we're using or that I'm sharing with you right now if it wasn't for them. They, uh, subscribe to a program called Placer AI, and if you want to dive into how all that works, ask Keith Lee. Not even gonna try to explain it, 'cause it, it's pretty, pretty technical. Disc golf. We've got a disc golf course out at Freeman Field. It's been there for a couple years now, but I was a little shocked when I saw the numbers from last year. Eleven hundred, or over eleven hundred rounds were tracked, with players coming in from thirteen different states. There was almost a hundred and fifty first-time visitors and more than thirty first rounds ever played at Freeman Field. Those all add up to over fourteen hundred hours spent on the disc golf course, three point five million steps, and over sixteen hundred miles walked, while folks enjoyed disc golf right here in the city of Seymour. There were a total of six hole-in-ones. I was none of them, but I can tell you that hole number one was the only one that got two last year. And I have to say thank you to all the groups from schools, churches, employers, and everybody else, um, from beyond that that helps make the parks thrive, because we had over two hundred-plus volunteers last year, joined alongside our full-time employees and some of our part-timers to help make our parks what they are. So if anybody's told you differently, Seymour Parks rock, and they will continue to do so into the future. So for twenty twenty-five, I've challenged Parks and Recreation to clear six hundred thousand visits. It's a little goal, about eighty thousand more than what last year took. Some of the things they're already exploring, though, new leagues. We had two new pickleball courts put in in twenty-twenty-four at Geyser Park. Denny, you up there here now? Okay. Two new pickleball courts. With those two new pickleball courts, they're looking at a summer league. Alongside that summer league, they're also trying to work with Seymour Community Schools to see if we can't offer a winter league like we do with volleyball. Tuesday night disc golf league, get out there and enjoy. For those of you that play disc golf, get out there tomorrow night, 'cause right now I'm leading the February league and I'm a horrible disc golfer. Community center upgrades. So with the community center, we get, received a Home Depot grant that's gonna do a little bit of a facelift, do a backsplash, do a new island, do some of the things that needs to happen. But they're also already exploring, what does programming look like? How do we get more people there? Is it, uh, bringing in the police chief to call bingo one day, maybe? It'll be fun. Parks and Rec, though, will make it happen, and I, I believe that they can hit that six hundred thousand visitors. It won't be easy, but they can make it happen. The big conversation for the future, though, is the Shields Park Pool Rehab. Shields Park Pool has been well-maintained. A lot of that credit goes to Parks Director, previous Parks Director, all the staff, and Dave Boggs and company. Dave's been there, I believe, since nineteen ninety-one, when it was originally started. The pool was built in nineteen ninety-one, and even with that good maintenance, the filtration system should be on about system number three, and we're still on the original system. The children's area, we put a Band-Aid on it last year, and thanks to WPC and Parks for making that Band-Aid happen, we were able to get it open for one more season there. The concession area was identified a couple years ago, and we were working on the study that, uh, we're using to lead this project forward. Total project's gonna look at about four point five million dollars worth of improvements with the filtration, with the children's area, with the concession area, and everything that needs to happen. Counsel, I'm turning to you guys on that one, because we're gonna have to talk very soon about a bond related to the pool project. And when I say very soon, probably in the next few months, we'll be trying to get that underway. Department of Public Works. First off, thanks to Mark out of DPW for his work on the Airport Road Roundabout. Uh, it turned out quite nice. Uh, that's a throwback to the Army Air Corps insignia, if I remember correctly. Last year, they opened Fourth and O'Brien Roundabout, and it took just a few hours for somebody to have a property damage accident, which is not unusual. Roundabouts don't stop accidents, but they do change what they are. Instead of being personal injury, they become property damage. About three weeks after that, though, was the first time somebody walked up to me and let me know that they really loved their new roundabout. Same guy had told me just three or four weeks before the roundabout opened how horrible of an idea it was gonna be, and how he really wasn't in fan, wasn't a fan of it. But six weeks later, and he's done it several times since when I ruined him, he loves his new roundabout and says it makes his drive that much easier. One of the things that generally I think when you're looking at your, your folder later, council members, was how much mowing we do. Every two weeks, we mow roughly seventy-five acres. So I was trying to figure out what to put that into relation to. That way, it makes more sense. So I got to thinking about it, and there are third stadiums in the NFL. That would be about the same as what we mow every two weeks, but alas, football stadiums mostly are turf. So then I got down the rabbit hole and realized that fourteen of the NFL stadiums are natural grass, and that maths out to be almost perfect with how much grass we mow every week. So every week, in the spring, summer, and into the fall, Department of Public Works crew, very small crew when it comes to the mowing crew, mows all fourteen of those NFL stadiums. Last year, DPW did thirty-six tons of mix, twenty tons of coal patch, and sixteen tons of a hot mix. Again, you know, that's roughly thirteen hundred potholes that they worked on. You know, there's a lot of ways to look at it, but what can we put that into that'll help it make a little more sense? So weight-wise, Greg, I'm, I'm going to you on this one, because that equals about thirteen Tahoe's for the Seymour Police Department that DPW put... that DPW put down to help patch the roads last year. Bernie and Chad, Bernie being the engineer, Chad DPW Director, Chad's our employee in responsible charge. So he works alongside with NDOT on a regular basis. Also means they get tasked with the headache of dealing with road projects. O'Brien Street from the Louisville and Indianapolis Railroad on the south side to Fourth Street. We're currently in the right-of-way process of that, trying to get everything purchased, everything rented, if you will, on those temporary right-of-ways. Trying to get everything in place. I first mentioned this project back in twenty twenty before we were ever even approved for it. A few months after that state of the city, we received our approval for phases two or, yeah, phases two and three of O'Brien. We should go to letting later this year and be able to finally get started on construction. I believe it's within ninety days of the final letting there. Second Street has been a major project. The name of the game in twenty twenty-four was utility delays. Seemed like every time we turned around, the next utility was, oh, I can't be there for two more days and then the rain would come and just headache after headache after headache. But finally, late in twenty twenty-four, Milestone Contractors was able to get started on Second Street. So what seemed like we'd been under construction for all summer really didn't get started until about November. Milestone tells us that they're gonna be able to make some major progress this year. And with a little bit of luck and the right weather, maybe we'll see this project reopen or this street reopen completely by the end of the year. Now, hold my breath, though, because I'd learned a long time ago with road projects that there's always something to give you a headache. Other major project going on with DPW right now is the transfer station. A few years ago, council approved the transfer station via R funds. Twenty twenty-four, we spent a big chunk of the year trying to make sure that all the Ts were crossed and all the Is were dotted for IDIM when it came to how the project had to look. Late in twenty twenty-four, we finally got all those approvals lined up and we were able to start moving some dirt and get the project underway. Here we are in early twenty twenty-five. The project is still not really coming out of the ground, but they're telling us that they'll be done by the end of the year. That'll be a game changer when it comes to how we do our trash service, how we get back and forth to the landfill. And ultimately lead to savings that should help us avoid a rate increase in the future. Says the former DPW Director. Next up, we got Freeman Municipal Airport or KSER if you want to use the identifier code. Fuel cells are up. Takeoffs and landings are up. Well, I guess landings were technically could be down, but there were more of them than there were the year before. When Colin Smith started with us in October of twenty twenty-two, he told me at that time he had a five-year goal of turning us into a regional airport. I don't know if you guys know Colin Smith, but he's a pretty determined young man. Here we are about halfway through this process and I think he's gonna make it. It'd be fun to watch and so far Colin has been entertaining us all get out, watching you get there. One of the projects that helps along that way, though, we currently have a waiting list when it comes to space in our hangars. We're working on a new hangar project. That project, the dirt work has been approved. Have they started moving dirt yet?
Not yet.
Okay. I didn't think they had. But the construction bids are coming in soon as well. So the airport is, all puns intended, really taking off. Water pollution control. What can I say about my favorite group of ZZ Top impersonators? Love you guys. So what can I say about water pollution control? They cleaned over five miles of ditches last year. They cleaned over four miles of sanitary and storm sewer lines combined. And they televised for inspection over three miles of lines. Last year, they had seventy-seven call-outs. Of those seventy-seven call-outs, fifty-one percent of them were found to be in obstruction on the homeowner's side of things. Thirty-five percent of them were in our system, which we have a system that's well over seventy-five years old in some places. And fourteen percent of them, and this number kind of surprised me, were related to clean water. So Indian American had some drinking water issues that people believed were sewer-related issues. And just to prove that I do read Jaren's weekly update, both pictures are straight out of a couple of weeks ago's updates. So a while back, we ended up with a state revolving fund loan that we put to good work. Outside the fence on that SRF loan, we did things like Mutton Creek Forest Main, which the year that we tackled that Forest Main, I think there were five or six breaks in the course of the year leading up to that replacement. Snide Acres, it's only been about twelve years since we annexed Snide Acres, but we finally have everybody with an option to join in and be on the system. And then we worked on a gravity system out towards the three forty north lift station. Inside the plant was everything that come a little bit later. Belt presses are in the works. The top picture is actually some concrete work related to those. Ultraviolet system that has to be up from April first all the way to October thirty-first. And they're shaking their heads because I got the dates right, without notes even. UV system, though, the new system they're putting in should be more energy efficient and much like trash services should help us keep from raising rates. Fingers crossed multiple times. Now, we'll see. Depends on how, how much trouble and how much costs go up. The other piece on the inside of the plant is the laundry covers, which if you can see it from here, it is the white ring inside of the clarifiers. Helps cut down on the moss growth, helps cut down on brushes that we probably have to buy. It's all kinds of little pieces related to those laundry covers. Educationally, WPC is right up there with all the rest of our departments. Police Department has required trainings, both from the state and both internally. Fire Department has required trainings. WPC is no different. These guys take what you flush and forget and send it back to the river cleaner than what the water it's going into probably is. On the educational front, Chad Henley passed his class ones. Doug Gregory just recently passed his class fours. Congratulations, Doug. And Brent Hertz was our first graduate from the seaside, from the Vincennes University Electrical Engineering Program. It's a certification program, but Brent really did find a lot of things and honestly, I found it entertaining as a guy that has maybe melted through a wire or two in his days from, from wiring a room. I did find his presentation to me at the graduation ceremony very interesting. So congratulations to all those guys and I look forward to seeing who else adds to their collection of certifications, new classes, all the pieces going in to twenty twenty-five and beyond. When I asked Jaren what, what he wanted to see in the future, one of his responses was he wanted to improve efficiency. The belt press will do just that. Less polymers, less energy than what the old centrifuges use. Some great addition there. The UV system, I already mentioned that it's gonna cut down on power usage. But Jaren's even looking outside the box a little bit, trying to consider whether there's some solar options that might help him lower the electric bill a little bit. What I've discovered with Jaren, though, and I believe he actually said this to me, he's exploring all the options. Nothing is completely out until it proves itself to be. So WPC, keep doing what you guys are doing. Seymour Police Department. Hey, it did change. Okay. So public safety numbers. John and Greg, you know, had a, an interesting year, to say the least. Every month, they use twenty-one items in their snapshot to their supervisors meeting. And those twenty-one items are things like aggravated assault, battery, domestic violence. And of those twenty-one items, seventeen of them were down last year. Aggravated assaults were down eighty-four percent in city of Seymour in twenty twenty-four. Battery is down twenty-five percent. Domestic violence, down thirty-seven percent. The four that were up. Agency assist. So the percentage of agency assists went up nineteen percent. And if you're asking yourself, what is an agency assist? That's when a Seymour police officer goes out and he helps the Jackson County Sheriff's Department or something. It's when a Seymour police officer helps the Indiana State Police. Whatever federal agency calls and needs help, whatever other municipality calls and needs assistance. So compared to the previous year, nineteen percent more times we went out and helped other agencies. DCS assists, five point five percent increase. So we're helping child services more last year than we did the year before. I don't know about you guys, but of the four that are down, so far those first two don't really seem like it's something to be upset about when they're up. I'm content with Seymour Police Department helping other agencies and I'm definitely content with them helping children. The other two that were up, property damage accidents went up two point three percent. Personal injury accidents went up just shy of one percent last year. So all in all, just based on the twenty-one snapshot items that they use monthly and have used monthly for what, five years now? Seems like a pretty good year, but let's go a little deeper into it. And Greg, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna get fire involved for just a second in your section of what's going on. So I gotta turn the lights back on for a second. Everybody awake? Eric, would you give me a hand?
This can't be good.
I don't have no idea what this is.
Hold on to that for me.
Sure.
Feel free to show it off if you want to. So what Eric is holding is a jar of marbles. Each marble represents ten runs the Seymour Fire Department took part of in twenty twenty-three. I know, I said we've been talking about twenty-four all this time, but twenty twenty-three is what that jar of marbles represents. Twenty twenty-three Seymour Fire Department had two thousand five hundred and twenty-nine runs. What'd it look like in twenty twenty-four? Anthony, we talked earlier. Said no answer from you. Eric, I need you to open, take the lid off. Don't drop it, though, because I've already broke one of these. Okay? I'll be nice and do it for you. Man, that was a heck of a grab. Go ahead and close that. Fifty less runs last year in twenty twenty-four. So the Seymour Fire Department ended up with two thousand four hundred and eighty-one, and if you're doing the math, that's actually forty-eight less runs, but they're marbles. We're not gonna chip the edge off. Although there are some in there that probably do have the edges chipped off after I broke that glass. So last year, Seymour Fire Department made less runs than what they did in twenty twenty-three. That's down about two percent. And Eric, I'll take the jar back. How many firefighters you got here? One, two, three, four. I would encourage you to keep one, give one to all your firefighters in the room for a year that was above or better than the year before, and you can give whoever else the last one you want.
Thank you.
Greg? Go up there and get your jar. Jar's a little heavier, so I'll let Greg do all the lifting on this one. Our department measures a little differently. We don't just look at runs, we look at cases. So basically, this means a run that is a little more in-depth than what you would think about on just being a run. So again, the jar represents, one marble represents ten run, or ten cases. In twenty twenty-three, which is what the jar is at right now, you had thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two cases. Go ahead and take your lid off. Go ahead and give each council member a bag. Let's start there. Although Seth's hiding from me in the back, so we'll have to find him. So as you can see, we just took seven bags out of there. Greg, go ahead and take six more marbles out, though. Did you get them on the first try?
I did.
Wow. That's two in a row. Twenty twenty-four, the Seymour Police Department had twelve thousand three hundred and forty-two cases. It's twelve hundred and fifty down from the previous year. Or roughly ten percent. Now, I can tell you from looking at the numbers countywide, all but one department was similar. One department in particular was down almost fifty percent compared to twenty twenty-three. Greg, you're welcome to hang on to your marbles, share them with your officers, give them to whoever you want. But congratulations on another good year. You can put your jar back if you want to, or you can keep it.
Don't lose your marbles.
As you think about that, that follows a seven-year trend. For the last seven years, the Seymour Police Department has had at least a few less cases year after year. One year, it was just a little over one percent. Two, the good years, it was a little over ten percent. For that seven years in a row, that Seymour Police Department has pulled less cases, had less major incidents to work. I think that's a pretty good sign. It's also a pretty good sign of how hard the Seymour Police Department works. Just to keep the theme for just a second longer, in twenty twenty-four, if you do the math on it, that averages out to be about thirty-four cases a day. And you can thank Brad Lucas for this idea of looking at it this way, because you sent that email back in like October and asked a few questions and it sparked this, this rabbit hole for me that I ended up down. As of six PM tonight, we've averaged twenty-five cases a day. So for almost two months into the month or into the year of twenty twenty-five, we're down. Does that hold for the rest of the year? We don't know. We've got a little over ten months left to find out. If you're thinking it's because the Seymour Police Department didn't do as much last year, even though the cases are down, I can tell you right now, they did twenty-four percent more traffic stops. On those twenty-four percent more traffic stops, they still pulled less cases. So if your light was out, a lot of times that was all that you found in the process. It wasn't extra items for them to turn into a case. So last but not least, on the world of marbles. Denny, you've been wondering what the top hat is?
I was wondering.
Okay. A margarita. So we got a margarita. For those of you didn't hear, Brad, we have a margarita thing of marbles over here that are yellow and you'll understand the meaning of the yellow here in just a minute. Talking about Dispatch for just a second, and if you notice on your guys' marbles, there's a little bit of orange for the fire department, a whole lot of green and a whole lot of blue. Dispatch did over sixty-one hundred nine-one-one calls in twenty twenty-four. And I can tell you from looking at the monthly reports, majority, vast majority of those were answered in less than ten seconds. There was one month that it was a hundred percent answered in ten seconds. There was another month where it was ninety-nine, ninety-eight. I think the worst month was ninety-six something. So a whole lot of good work from the crew over at Dispatch. Can also tell you last month, the average call from nine-one-one at Seymour Dispatch was answered in two point one six seconds. Hey, it worked. So what's twenty twenty-five bring? Twenty-five will bring a couple of new faces. We had a great process just recently. We do that about every January. Over thirty told us they would be there, over twenty showed up. Almost twenty ended up going for the written test, so they showed up prepared. They ended up with the written test and right now I believe we've got three of them that are being, their background checks are being ran to make sure that they are eligible to be hired by the Seymour Police Department. Another new addition for twenty twenty-five is here in a few months, we will have a new K-9 officer. Is that a proper statement, K-9 officer? Okay. And I'm gonna mispronounce the name. K-O-N-I is on the screen right now. I'm gonna say Coney, but I'm not sure if that's the proper way to say it. Coney? Okay. But we'll have another new K-9 officer coming before the end of the year. That's gonna say you got, some of you guys are in a horrible spot right there. School resource officers. The SROs come to Chief a few years ago, well, about four years ago to be exact, and said, can we do a summer camp? And in typical fashion, yeah, tell us how you want to do it and we'll help figure out how to make it happen. Credit to those SROs. Credit to those SROs because this will be year four for it. They invite the fire department out to hose the kids down one day at least. Uh, do all kinds of fun stuff. Um, I know the year that my nephew went through it, the two of us went through the emergency vehicle operations session together. Um, it is absolutely a blast for the kids that are eligible to do it. It grew to the point that they decided that, uh, two years ago now, they were going to two sessions, one back to back weeks. So it's a great chance for our fifth and sixth graders to get to interact with police department, sheriff's department, fire department, EMS. Everybody, public safety that you can dream of. These kids are now having a chance to spend some face time with them. It's a great program. Thank you to the SROs for making that happen. And thank you, Chief, for supporting that over the years. Another thing that came on, um, and I wasn't completely sure whether this was late twenty three or early twenty four. So every day they figured out that the busiest time of day is somewhere between the two shifts. So our officers work six A to six P and the next shift comes in and work six P to six A. Greg kept telling me, well, I really think that the best time to put extra officers on the street is overlapping those two shifts. And we still don't have a catchy name for it, but our split shift has been going for quite a while and it puts more officers on the streets during our busiest times of day. It's a great chance to utilize the staff that we have. And it's a great chance also with those, with our current K nine officer and our incoming K nine officer, we'll have one assigned to each split shift. That way day shift and night shift will have access to K nine for at least part of their shift. Well, it's the odd year and that means it's time for the team survey. Do the adult survey on the even number of years. We do the team survey for kids ages thirteen to nineteen. We do that on the odd number of years. That is open as of now. So if you've got a teenager, um, watch over the next day or two for them to give us their opinion of what's going on. We also added a call log at the start of this year. January second was the first day that it was entered, anything was entered into it. We use that at DPW. We use that here at City Hall. We basically use it on the departments, uh, outside the police department because you guys already have an excellent call log going on. Our call log does a couple of things. A, it gives us a chance to keep an eye on how we respond to things. If Bonnie calls in and tells us that she's got a problem with whatever, that call log, we identify what the problem was and who we sent it to. That way if Bonnie calls back in a couple of days and says, I've still got this problem, we can follow up with who it was originally sent to, see what's going on. It gives us a chance to be accountable for those calls that are coming in. The secondary piece of it, though, is it gives us a chance to hold others accountable. I don't know how many times last year we had somebody call in and go, I have called ten times. Well, the problem was is a lot of times they hadn't. They'd called a second time and it was about twelve minutes after the first call. You go back, you start looking, you try to figure it out. You gotta give us time to work on stuff. We can't accomplish everything in a split second. So the call log not only holds us accountable, but holds citizens accountable. Recovery. In twenty two or twenty three, during the state of the city, I spent the last part of my city of the city talking about recovery. I was able that night to announce that we had just received a grant to work on recovery. Kevin, you remember your response to that? Because you were mad as hell at me for working on recovery.
I don't.
Okay, so. We started working on recovery that year. We were able through the grant to bring somebody in to truly study, what does recovery look like in the city of Seymour? How is it that somebody can get from a substance use disorder to the positive side of things, back to work, maybe getting their kids back, whatever it is? So this year I thought maybe I would do a little update on what that looks like a few years later. New beginnings recovery center saw over four hundred new clients last year. Currently they have thirty different intensive outpatient programs that they're working people through. They work with the courts here in Jackson and also Jennings County. One of the major things that come out of that original grant was the identification of one eighty RCO. And I could stand up here and talk for two or three hours probably on one eighty and the work they've done. But as I was reading their update that they sent me, I thought they said it best. Through education, advocacy and peer support services. One eighty RCO has strengthened Jackson County's recovery landscape in twenty twenty four. They're offering hope, connection and resources to individuals and families impacted by substance use disorder. And I couldn't agree more. Recovery is possible. It's possible right here in Seymour, Indiana. And if you're one of those folks that needs to get out of Seymour to find your recovery, I encourage you to do so. Or if you're from somewhere else and you happen to catch this, come talk to us. We can point you in the right direction. We now have services that can make it happen. As I work my way down the list of random pieces that don't necessarily fit into departments somewhere. Central Dispatch, county council, county commissioners. Paid for a study earlier last year. Late in the year, somewhere around October, November, they got the results of their study back. And from the results of that study, there were a few things that the report suggested. First, it suggested creating a separate entity, much like the EMS service. Let's bring somebody in that their job is working on this. Let's not make it the sheriff. Let's not make it the police chief. Let's bring somebody in that their focus is a hundred percent on dispatch. Other things that come out of that SPD, um, of all the locations they suggested, SPD was the number one suggestion. I'd be curious to watch that unfold once, if we do get to the point where we've hired somebody that their purpose is dispatch only. And but the major thing, and this is the reason that I bring it up tonight, is it showed a huge cost savings to our taxpayers. This is something that we need to truly chase. This is something we need to work on. Brady Riley sitting back here from county council, Commissioner Markles, sorry Drew, Commissioner Story is sitting back here. Guys, I'm telling you right now, we gotta talk and I know we've got a meeting coming up on the topic, but we need to make this one happen for our community. Because the savings will be worth it for everybody sitting in this room and everybody else that lives here. So quite a while ago. Hmm, not quite a while ago. Twenty twenty three, a young lady approached, this member of the mayor's youth council, Elizabeth Kirby. Retired firefighter, John Kirby's daughter. She's a senior this year. Elizabeth come to us and she said, can we plant yellow tulips? Sure, why? You know, I'm, I'm always inquisitive. Tell me what you're thinking. So if you go out and you look up the yellow tulip project dot org, you'll understand what the meaning is, but those yellow tulips relate to mental health. So Elizabeth come to us and her little idea of planting a few hundred tulips turned into a big idea. In the fall of twenty twenty three, we planted a thousand yellow tulips in the Walnut Street Roundabout. Spring of twenty twenty four, those thousand tulips bloomed. And for those that knew, reminded us all to think about our mental health. Also gave us the chance to look at it as a long-term project. We figured it takes about five years to fill up that entire roundabout with tulips. So the fall of twenty twenty four, we planted seven thousand more tulips. Chad has your hand.
They're finally healed.
They're finally healed. Um, shout out to Parks and Rec Airport, DPW, everybody that showed up to help plant tulips, volunteer groups. I would love to say it was a great time, but my back hurt for three days. But we planted seven thousand more bulbs in twenty twenty four in the fall. So here in not very long, we'll see eight thousand tulips bloom in the roundabout south of the city of Seymour. If you'll note, though, I said the roundabouts because Walnut Street is dedicated to mental health with four thousand so far. And the O'Brien Street part of the project is dedicated to unity with an assorted array of tulips. As we look at that, we're ahead of projections. We originally thought that mental health would take us five years to finish. Now we've added a whole extra roundabout into the mix, but we're still ahead of where we thought we would be in the spring of twenty twenty five. We have also just recently applied for a grant that may give us the purchase power to finish off both roundabouts. Um, so if anybody's got connections at Indiana American Water, please encourage them to, uh, to keep us in mind when they look at their grant. So if you haven't put two and two together yet, when you get ready to leave tonight. Go ahead and grab yourself a yellow marble to help you think, help you remember your mental health. It is important. Last thing I want to share with you tonight, um, related to new stuff. So just a few weeks ago, I graduated from a two-year program at Ball State University for certified public management. My capstone project with the CPM program was to come up with, uh, some sort of program, some sort of change, you know, what's it look like? So I chose my capstone to be a tree program. We all can rattle off at least a few of the benefits without trying real hard. A tree on your property adds about ten percent of value to your property. A tree in the right place along the road actually slows traffic down. HVAC savings, you know, spring, summer, winter, all the pieces there. Didn't have to stretch real far to think about it because we already had a very good curb appeal program. That curb appeal program actually also was a award winning program back in twenty twenty two. So we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. But one of the major differences between the two programs is the funding. Thanks to the Jackson County Solid Waste District and the Redevelopment Commission, the funding that covers the tree program is actually coming from those two organizations that they donate to the tree board. Sorry, I got too many trees in my head here, as they donate to the tree board every year. So thank you, RDC members. Thank you to the Solid Waste District. Um, your help is helping us help others plant trees. So for many years, I would have left you with the immortal words of Porky the Pig. Somewhere in twenty twenty three, though, I realized that is not all. We as a community have so much more to do. Tonight I leave you with the words of Eddie Jakku. If you're gonna look him up at home, J A K U. He authored a book called The Happiest Man on Earth. Your efforts today will affect people you never know. It's your choice whether that effect is positive or negative. You can choose every day, every minute to act in a way that may uplift a stranger or else drag them down. The choice is easy and it is yours to make. Thank you. Darren, pick up my t-shirts. Okay. Uh, anything from council tonight?
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Mayor, I have been, uh, discussing with Chris about some code of conduct. I've also been in contact with Mr. Hinkle. Um, I would ask that you send that over to committee for further review.
Um, code of conduct, what do you think in governmental affairs?
Probably.
Doesn't make sense for retail development, doesn't make much sense for thoroughfare and drainage. Congratulations, governmental affairs. We're gonna take a look at code of conduct. Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir. A quick update on the, uh, fingerprint scanners. I've been in contact with, uh, some folks over county. They've got, they've received our quote for the server, so that's progressing further. They will, uh, they're trying to iron out that, make sure they got all the details right in their quote. We'll be hearing from them shortly.
Anyone else? Sorry, trying to get the camera to reset.
Um, for the council, I have a list of stale checks, state board require, state board of accounts requires us, uh, wants a check. This, the city is issued is over two years old, uh, beginning of the year. We have to write them off as stale and uh, with changes with the state, they now go to Indiana unclaimed. I have that list here in front of me if any of you choose or want to look at it. Uh, total dollar value is four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and ninety six cents. Most of them are utility related for some reason, never got cashed, so. But it's here. You're welcome to look at it. Uh, I just need it entered into the record that it has been covered and that's what's gonna happen to it.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Everybody enjoy your night.